Good evening, welcome to the Town Council July 9th Public Hearing.
Good evening. I will call the meeting to order, thank you for being here, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenna will not be with us this evening. We do have one set of minutes up for approval tonight, is there a motion to approve the June 11th Public Hearing Minutes?
So.
Discussion on motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Alright, that motion carries. We have several presentations this evening. It's my great privilege to read the proclamation recognizing the Northwest Federal Credit Union for their collaboration and hospitality for hosting our 2019 Herndon Festival. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing the Northwest Federal Credit Union for the 2019 Herndon Festival. The time honored Herndon Festival had been held in downtown Herndon since it began in 1980. With the planned redevelopment of the downtown, the festival committee searched high and low for a new venue that would allow the carnival and many of the other festival elements to continue. It became apparent that a potentially viable location was the corporate headquarters for Northwest Federal Credit Union at 200 Spring Street. In addition to partnering with the town on events like the Icebreaker 5K, Northwest Federal Credit Union was a regular sponsor of the Herndon Festival, including sponsoring the K-9 2K Walk for several years, and was familiar with the festival's scope and size. Northwest Federal Credit Union was the title sponsor for the festival in 2018 and 19, generously committing significant funds and volunteer support to our event. In May 2018, the town and Northwest Federal Credit Union signed a memorandum of understanding outlining the partnership between the two entities to promote and host the 2019 Herndon Festival. Therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby commend Northwest Federal Credit Union, including Jeff Bentley, the Chief Executive Officer, who was ever present at the festival, and usually smiling when I saw him, Project Manager Raquel Ortiz, Kristin Solar, Manager and Events and Communication Strategy, the Executive Leadership, Board of Directors, the employees and their credit union members, for being active and engaged partners, and for the collaboration and cooperation they demonstrated in planning and executing the Herndon Festival. Northwest Federal Credit Union's team maintained a positive attitude throughout and was willing to make concessions to their regular operating procedures to facilitate the festival requirements. Further, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby expressed their sincere appreciation to Northwest Federal Credit Union, its leadership and employees, for working to make a positive impact in the community they serve, and for their outstanding organization, effective communication, hospitality, and flexibility during the 2019 Herndon Festival. The Town of Herndon looks forward to continuing our important and successful relationship with Northwest Federal Credit Union. So, thank you for your hospitality, it was quite a risk on everyone's part, and it came off beautifully, people were thrilled, although there was some worry about it because change is hard, but I really don't think that it could have gone much better, I know there have been some tweaking to the plans, as there always are, and we just are grateful for all of the things that you do to support our town and our community, and this was a big one, so with a grateful heart, we thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other comments from council, I'm sure that there are? Anyone? Let me start, see, I'll just go down. Ms. Friedrichs.
There isn't a lot to add to that, but I do think it was one of the most comfortable festivals ever, and I served on the festival committee for a number of years, and also have run beer booths at the festivals for a number of years, and I think this was, in many ways, one of the most wonderful, and I know it was because of you all, and because of your kind loan of your facility, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thoroughly enjoyed the venue, it was like being in a small town, because you have the little avenues, so that it had that feel, and the trees in the parking lot gave people shelter from the heat of the day, and you already had tables out there, which were very nice, my mom had ended up sitting at one of those and holding audience while she was there, she doesn't like to walk around a lot, she had her 91st birthday on Sunday, so I also heard a lot of positive comments from our staff on how easy it was to clean up, because they didn't have to clean up around all of the people hanging out in the town going to the local establishments, so that made the cleanup easier. The police, I heard more than once, liked being able to secure the facility, and I really enjoyed looking down from the parking deck and being able to see the whole thing, which usually my only bird's eye view is when I get on the Ferris wheel, which I did do that too, but it was great, I thoroughly enjoyed it, thank you very much.
Thank you, other comments? Yes sir.
Thank you so much for your partnership, looking forward to continuing in the years to come.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, Herndon Festival is one of my favorite events, much like many people in town, so it was really an important tradition to make sure that we kept that. It is a unique space and event that we needed, and your space, I think, really was ideal to me, I think the festival had outgrown, I know we all loved the charm of the downtown, and I live really close to downtown, so I can certainly appreciate why people didn't want it to move, but at the same time, we had really outgrown it from the downtown probably years ago, so I'm thrilled that it was moved, I love that it exposed people to Northwest Federal Credit Union, to your property, to how much space you have back there, to the size of your buildings and your parking lots, so thank you also to the childcare facility, I know there were disruptions, right, this took a lot of time and effort and planning, so the week's up to it, and certainly those few days as stuff is there and the carnival rides are getting put up, I know it was an inconvenience for lots and lots of folks, so we do appreciate that, certainly the employees, the members, and again to that childcare facility. I think Signe touched on this, but I loved that there was such, so much easier for mobility, right, for folks, that was definitely something I heard several times from folks, that it was just much easier to get around, not only more space, but certainly for folks with limited mobility, they had a much easier time. I loved that there were more rides, I actually went to the rides twice this time, usually I just do it kind of once, but I had a couple times, and loved that there was more space for that, and of course, the expanded bike valet, certainly talking to lots of my neighbors, again, many of us who live closer to the downtown, the bike valet just made it really easy to make sure that we could still get there in 10 minutes instead of the five minute walk, right, or a 10 minute walk instead of a 10 minute bike ride, so worked out really, really beautifully, so again, thank you for your partnership, I know how much, just you have a very grateful Town Council and grateful town that you stepped up for us, thank you.
Thank you. Yes sir.
Thank you Northwest Federal Credit Union for your partnership with the Town of Herndon. By allowing us to use your property, not only you show you do business in Town of Herndon, but you actually do care about the Town of Herndon and the residents, so thank you so much, and the space was great, it was spacious, and we enjoyed, and looking forward to your partnership in future as well, thank you.
Thank you, well, we have several guests here this evening, I'd like to recognize and invite forward, Jeff Bentley is here, President and CEO of Northwest Federal Credit Union, and of course Cindy Roder from Parks and Rec, and anyone else who's here from Parks and Rec and from the HPD who were integrally involved in this, I'd like to invite forward anybody that would like to make any comments on this, is there anybody that wanted to make any comments? Would you like to, certainly, we'd love to hear from you first.
Well, thank you so much, those are really wonderful comments, and it was really our pleasure, we love participating with the Town of Herndon, we're big in the community, as most of you know, and so this was a real opportunity for us to step up and help, and I agree, it was a wonderful venue compared to downtown, seemed like, to your point, the little streets and then the shade trees, and it all kind of worked, and frankly, you're a great partner, you know, the cleanup we were a little concerned about, but it was like it never happened, you know, the next day it was all done, and it was like, wow, that was pretty amazing, so great partnership, I think it went really, really well, and we were just so happy to be able to help out, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to come forward? Yes ma'am.
Well, you guys have said all the thank yous, but from the staff, it was amazing to have this partnership with Northwest Federal Credit Union, the town could not have chosen a better partner to make the festival happen. We spent hours and hours and hours walking around their parking lot and talking with their staff about all of the logistics and all of the arrangements that needed to be made and figured out and reconfigured from the downtown to the new space, and the staff at Northwest was nothing but hospitable and accommodating and flexible, and when they asked us questions about how things were going to evolve and happen, we gave them our best guess, and then it turned out differently, and they went with the flow, helped us make it happen, they did all kinds of things to accommodate the event, including doing their own continuity of operations, testing where they allowed their folks to work from home, and modified their business hours at the branch to help mitigate the traffic issues, gave up their parking garage for us, it really was an amazing, amazing gift to the festival to have Northwest participate as our partner, so we thank them, and we are super excited that they're going to let us come back next year.
Oh, hew. Quick, let's give them the certificate. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and say anything about this partnership before we have the presentation? Well, I think that I have a fortune that I keep on the back of my phone that says, "Over-prepare, then go with the flow," and I think that's the theme of the festival and kind of life in general, so I'm glad it went so well, can't wait for next year. So with that, I'd like to invite forward the entire council, our Town Attorney, Town Manager, everyone from Northwest Federal Credit Union, Parks and Rec, HPD, Public Works, and if there are any other staff or members of the audience that would like to join us, or members of the Festival Committee, or former council members, we'd love to have you come forward.
Congratulations on the merger, I just saw in the Washington Business.
Oh yeah, thank you, yeah, it's good stuff.
You didn't work the 4th of July, did you? Because Jim and I.
I'll get you through it, Jersey. She's not getting away with it, not getting in the picture, so I'm going to need you guys to go this way, and then look at me this way.
Signe.
Big crowd. Perfect.
We have to show you.
6, 2019, and I'll recognize the Vice Mayor to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Night Out, August 6, 2019. First celebrated on August 7, 1984, National Night Out is a unique crime and drug prevention event sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch. Over the past 35 years, National Night Out has grown into a massive, multi-international community building campaign that involves over 38 million people, over 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. Territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. The Town of Herndon supports the Herndon Police Department and local anti-crime programs in their efforts to heighten crime awareness and prevention, promote community police partnerships, and strengthen community spirit, energy, and determination, helping to make our neighborhoods safer and better places to live. By celebrating National Night Out and in the cooperation with efforts as Neighborhood, Fleet, and Business Watch, the Herndon community sends a message to criminals that our neighborhoods are organized and fighting back against crime. Therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon hereby proclaim, August 6, 2019, as the 36th Annual National Night Out, and in the Town of Herndon, we encourage all neighborhoods and businesses to join the Herndon Police Department and the community as we unite, celebrate, and promote National Night Out throughout the town. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, do you have any comments for us?
Yes, this is definitely a fun event, I remember the first one I went to years ago, way before I got on the council, it kicked off at the Old Town Green, that little tiny town green across from the Green Lizard and the Florist, and it's just always been super fun ever since, now it pretty much seems to always kick off at the Harbor House, and we have to split up because so many communities have gotten involved, so if your community's not doing anything, check out where we're all going, and show up at one of the parks that we're going to, it is really a lot of fun, you get to meet the officers, if you don't know them already, you probably do, and sometimes they even bring the K-9 guys and gals out so that we can meet those, kids get a kick out of that, thank you.
Thank you, other comments? Ms. Friedrichs.
So my mom lives at Harbor House, which is the first stop on National Night Out, and before she lived there, I had never gone to National Night Out, it is, first of all, they do an amazing job, there's all kinds of fun games, and the staff there is amazing, but what I really wanted to say is, this is one of the reasons why our police force is so effective and so good and so popular, because when I walk door to door, people, and I say, "What's the best thing about Herndon?", a lot of the time, they say, "It's our police force," and it's because they go around two neighborhoods and get to know people, and the kids know them, the residents know them, everybody knows them, and I think that's one of the strengths of our community and why we're such a healthy community, so National Night Out is great, thank you to the police, and I yield my time.
Thank you, who else would like to speak? Yes sir.
I'm really looking forward to this year, not only as a participant, as a council member, but I put in a special request to potentially volunteer as a reserve deputy sheriff, so looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Yes ma'am.
This is absolutely one of my favorite nights of the year as a councilperson, just so much fun to get to ride around in a cop car with the Herndon police, for a very good reason. I think National Night Out really represents community policing, that's certainly, you know, the genesis of the event itself, and I think Chief DeBord and the rest of the Herndon police force just embody that spirit every day, not just at National Night Out, that's the night we all get to see that, and me as a councilperson, I get to see that, but our community and our folks, they see this all the time, this is what our police department does, they get out there, they talk to folks, not in times just when things are bad, or when some things, there's times of trouble, they're just out there in the community, and I absolutely love that, and I think this night just sort of culminates and shows just the absolute best part of that, and certainly with all that's happening throughout our country, now more than ever, we need to continue these types of events and this type of interaction with our police force, it's critical for the safety and well-being of all of us. As I think the mayor said, I mean, we are now up to at least two or maybe three motorcades, I don't even know how many it's going to be this year, there's so many, so just be prepared that night if you do need to get anywhere, that you'll see random motorcades, but hopefully you're at one of the neighborhood parties and you're going to join us, and as I think Signe said, it is just such a huge value of living in the town, right, it's part of what we, part of the value that we get as a town, is that we don't have Fairfax County Police, we have our own town police, and I, it's just, it's an enormous asset to our town residents and our businesses, thank you.
Thank you, yes sir.
It's a great event, which I missed last year, so I'm not going to miss this year, I've already marked the calendar, and I will be riding with HPD, and I think this is an opportunity for councilmembers, police, and residents to strengthen our relationship and also, you know, bring more trust amongst each other, so it's a great event, and I will be riding with police, so hopefully, you know, people don't take it a different way. Thank you.
Thank you, it is a great night, and every year, we get some frantic phone calls, wondering, "What's going on?", there are police cars everywhere, but it's just National Night Out, and we're looking forward to it as we always do, so I would like to invite forward, who is going to come up and speak, I believe it's Corporal Austin, are you on the hook tonight? He's going to come down and say a few words, and if there's anyone from the citizen support team that would like to come forward, we'd love to hear from you as well. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel, members of Town Council and Town Manager, on behalf of the Chief of Police Maggie DeBord and the men and women of Herndon Police Department, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the importance of National Night Out, and how it involves all the Town of Herndon communities. This year will be the 36th year the Herndon Police Department has participated in National Night Out, which is recognized nationwide. National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnership and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring place to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring the men and women of the Herndon Police Department and neighbors together under positive circumstances. We are excited to have 14 communities participate in this year. At this time, I'd like to present Town Council, Town Manager with a T-shirt recognizing National Night Out 2019. Thank you.
We are. Thank you so much, is there anyone else that wanted to come forward about National Night Out? Alright, well with that, I will invite forward the entire dais once again, all of our HPD members that are here, including the chief, and do we have members of the support team here? No, okay, I didn't think I saw anyone, I was just checking, and if there's anyone else that would like to come forward to honor this event, we welcome you down. is July of this year, and I will recognize councilmember DeCall to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Parks and Recreation Month, July 2019. Since 1985, the National Recreation and Park Association, NRPA, has designated July as the month to recognize parks and recreation nationwide. This year's theme, "Game On," is all about highlighting the fun, games, and exciting offerings at our local parks and recreation centers. Locally, the Town of Herndon Parks and Recreation Department's mission is to create programs to build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those in need, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. The Town of Herndon recognizes that the town's diverse and accessible recreational amenities are vitally important to lead initiatives and provide opportunities for people of all ages to achieve healthier lifestyles, promote and understand nature and conservation, as well as bringing the community closer through a variety of programs and services. In July and throughout the year, residents are encouraged to participate in outdoor activities, connect with nature, family and friends, and discover new ways to have fun in our community. The dedication of nationally renowned Town of Herndon Department of Parks and Recreation staff and volunteers contributes to the success of top-quality events and programs, including summer camps for all ages, the Labor Day Festival, Nature Fest, the 4th of July Celebration, the Holiday Arts and Crafts Show, the Kids Triathlon, Herndon Olympics and Harvest Moon Swim meets, the Turkey Trot, and the Herndon Festival. Therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 as National Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Herndon, and encourage all residents to get out there and show that it's game on at local parks and recreation programs and facilities. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir, do you have comments for us?
Sure, this is an opportunity for us to acknowledge the importance of parks and recreation, and the benefits that they provide to the people, especially health and wellness, because it makes people healthy mentally as well as physically, also conservation of nature, because it promotes, you know, protecting nature and connecting people to nature and engaging in many different, you know, conservation activities, and also brings a social equity, because anybody can have access to Parks and Rec, right, so that gives ownership to people and brings social equity as well, so we are very proud that we have a great Park and Rec Department, we are proud to, proud of all our employees, all our, you know, people working at Park and Rec, including Director Cindy, thank you so much for putting all these activities together throughout the year, and I encourage everybody to come out, just like, you know, we said in this proclamation, game on, let's have some fun there, and let's enjoy the nature, and let's create a better and healthy lifestyle together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, other comments? Ms. Friedrichs.
It really seems appropriate that this is the time that we've taken to thank the Parks and Rec for all that they do, because they've just been through the festival and the 4th of July, and they're going through a little bit of a break now, I believe, I hope, no, never mind, but this was a pretty tough time, and I just want to thank Cindy for her leadership and her staff. The longer I live in Herndon, the more I realize what she has accomplished, what the staff has accomplished, and what's available, it's not really apparent necessarily to the casual observer how many different programs and facilities are available in that, what seems like a fairly small location, so I thank you all so much, and look forward to more stuff.
Other comments, anyone? Ms. Baker?
Yes, I also just want to say thank you, it's a great just moment to make sure we acknowledge our awesome Parks and Rec Department, there are 11 parks in town, some run by our department, some run by Fairfax County, but nonetheless, every resident has access to lots of parks, of course, the community center, I think, is what most people think of with Parks and Rec, which is of course the kind of the hub of activity and lots of activity there, and with what Signe was just saying, swimming, right, there is so, I mean, every person I know takes swimming classes, adults to kids, so there is so much activity, of course, Herndon Olympics this week, so lots of activity with the swimming events, not to mention all the events and programs like the festival and the races and triathlons and all these other things that you organize to keep us really healthy and fit and active throughout the year, so thank you for all that, so that there's so much available to our residents and our residents outside of town, right, so this is certainly not just for Herndon, this is a resource that folks outside of our 4.2 square miles also take advantage of, so game on, thank you.
Thank you, and Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, yes, I got to go to the Herndon Olympics today, it was their 40th. out the medals to the kids that won at the Herndon Olympics today. So the kids from all our surrounding area swim teams were there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, another thing they do in the summer, they never rest in the summer, summer fun and teen discovery. If you've got young children and you're not checking that out, that is one of the best programs we've got for our first graders through teenagers. So when my younger son got to go through the teen discovery, the older son wanted to go back and be a chaperone because it was so much fun. Thanks, you do a great job.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues and something, the Parks and Rec Department, through the programming, is the first introduction a lot of people have to the Town of Herndon. And what is happening to me now, at the stage of life that I'm in with my kids, I started out doing all of the toddler ballet and all the cute things there, and we would meet other parents and kids, and now we're like running into them at, you know, Herndon High School. And when we go to middle school, and it's just, it's so fun to realize and embarrass your child by going, do you know you used to crawl around with her and play at the Herndon Community Center? And they're all like, oh my God. But it really does bring a sense of community and I just appreciate all that you do. Did you want to come forward and say anything Cindy or anybody else from Parks and Rec? And then we'll have the presentation.
Absolutely, thank you very much. But first, thank you Vice Mayor Olin for joining us this morning at the Herndon Olympics Swim Meet. I know you mentioned that already. This is one of the premier events in the summer for the swim teams. There were over 500 entries. This was the 40th year, so this is the 40th Herndon Olympics. I wanted to express my appreciation to Sheerstin Severin from our Parks and Recreation staff and Kelly Janeski, who have been the coordinators for the Herndon Olympics for the past 11 years. I don't think anyone else has survived that long in handling this event, and I'm not sure what's going to happen when they decide that they're ready to hang up their whistles. But as you mentioned, Josh Davis and Anthony Irvin were here. They did a clinic with the kids, 70 kids yesterday in the pool to help them out with their stroke and their technique and their mental attitude towards swimming and competing, as well as handed out the awards this afternoon, or this morning. So it was a great day for it and we appreciate you coming to help out. In regards to Parks and Recreation Month, thank you for taking the time to recognize not only the staff of the department, and as you know, there are several of them here tonight, who are passionate advocates for the quality of life Parks and Recreation contributes to a community. But the Parks and Recreation Month campaign is intended to encourage everyone to reflect on the value Parks and Recreation brings to communities. Among other things, Parks and Recreation Services protect open space and natural resources, help fight obesity, and provide activities and resources for everyone in the community. According to a 2018 study commissioned by NRPA, the National Recreation and Park Association, an overwhelming majority of Americans asserted that they personally benefit and that their communities benefit overall from local parks. On average, Americans visit their local parks twice a month. Three in four live within a 10-minute walk of a local park or recreation facility, and here in Herndon, everyone is within a half mile of a park. 85% of Americans consider high-quality Parks and Recreation amenities important factors when choosing a new place to live. More than 9 in 10 agree that Parks and Recreation is an important local government service. And support for local parks is widespread, spanning different age groups, income strata, household types, and political affiliations. From a wellness perspective, the Centers for Disease Control found that increased access to places for physical activity led to a 25.6% increase in people exercising three or more times a week, which meets their standard of 150 minutes of exercise per week. Children that have easy access to a playground are approximately five times more likely to have a healthy weight than children that do not have such access. From an environmental standpoint, a park with one acre of trees absorbs the carbon dioxide produced by a car driven 11,000 miles. Further, evidence not only shows that parks are cooler than their surrounding towns, but actually shows that parks contribute to overall urban cooling. Parks make our towns and cities more comfortable in the summer. And economically, according to a 2015 study conducted by the Center for Regional Analysis at George Mason and NRPA, local park agencies generated more than $150 billion in economic activity and supported more than 1 million jobs from their operations and capital spending. With the opportunity to swim, work out, take a class, or attend a camp at the community center, join the fun at the downtown events every Saturday in July, walk the trails and observe nature in Rennie Mead Park, participate in athletic activity at Brady, Haley Smith, or Bruin Parks, or take your puppy to the dog park in Shandon, to mention a few, there are wonderful recreational opportunities here in Herndon to enjoy in July or any time of the year. And again, thank you for recognizing Parks and Recreation Month, and thank you for recognizing the dedicated work and enthusiasm of your Parks and Recreation staff who make me proud every day with their heartfelt commitment to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. So we would like to invite forward Cindy Roder and everybody from Parks and Rec. I think we have some festival committee members, maybe they're still here, and anyone else that would like to come forward for the presentation, along with all my colleagues. Billy Duquette. We have a certificate of congratulations for you as he was named the 2018 Athlete of the Year by the Virginia Special Olympics. Each year, hundreds of volunteers and athletes contribute to Special Olympics of Virginia in so many ways. Picking a few volunteers and athletes to recognize as outstanding representatives of the Special Olympics is a difficult task. Awardees are exceptional individuals and stand out in their areas of contribution to the program and to the health, community, sports, and education pillars of Special Olympics. The Town of Herndon is proud to be the home of Billy Duquette, who was named, as I said before, the 2018 Athlete of the Year. Billy is an extraordinary young man and we are honored to recognize him this evening. Billy demonstrates the true spirit of Special Olympics in everything that he does and is a leader in the truest sense. Not only does he participate in six sports, six, he also serves as a mentor and leader in many ways. I want, we have the certificate to present to you, but I want to read what it says so that everyone can see it. It says, "A Town of Herndon, Virginia Certificate of Congratulations to William Billy Duquette, 2018 Athlete of the Year, Special Olympics, Virginia. For your many achievements with the Special Olympics, including participating in six sports, serving as a leader and mentor to other athletes, admirably representing the Town of Herndon, dedicating your time and efforts to the health, community, sports, and education pillars of the Special Olympics, Virginia, and for being a true example of the Special Olympics spirit. Presented this day by the Herndon Town Council, July 9, 2019." So congratulations to you. We've had the pleasure of meeting him a couple times before, and when your neighbor Suzanne contacted me a little, a few weeks ago, said we really need to recognize his accomplishments and efforts, and so we couldn't wait to get this on the calendar. And I'm pleased to see Councilman Stevie Mitchell, who we've made sure to invite. I know you guys grew up together, so I'm really glad that you were able to be here this evening. Are there any comments from council before the presentation? Anybody? Ms. Baker?
Congratulations. So thank you for being a leader and a mentor among your peers and your fellow athletes. We all need good examples in whatever we do, right? And so you're there to compete in six sports, now I know, six sports, but the fact that you showed such leadership and mentorship to your fellow athletes is so commendable, and I love that you live in our town and you're recognized for the entire state, and it's just an honor to get to recognize you tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Mr. Delagula and followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
Congratulations and thank you for reminding us humbly that the human spirit is indomitable and that you truly can do what you set your heart and mind to. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And Ms. Friedrichs.
I know I said this earlier, but I just want to thank you for making us all so proud. This is a really special honor and it reflects very well on the town, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. DeKalb.
Congratulations, and we are very proud that we could facilitate, I mean, felicitate you today, and we hope to see many more accomplishments. And you've been a great leader in terms of, you know, how you lead your colleagues and your peers, so we look forward to seeing more and more in future, and Town of Herndon is very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to go ahead and invite you down for the presentation, and then I'd also like to invite your neighbor Suzanne Flagel and Councilman Stevie Mitchell and your family and friends that are here. We'd love to have you forward, and then if anyone would like to say a few words to congratulate Billy, we'd love to hear from you.
Sorry, I'm quite loud, so I don't know how. My name's Nicole Kratzser. I work for Special Olympics, Virginia. I just want to say that we serve 23,000 athletes in the state of Virginia. So each year, when it is our duty to choose just one of those said 23,000 as the Athlete of the Year, it's quite a hard choice, right? How do you choose just one? Granted, it's a pool of people who've set forth an application, and out of all the candidates this year, Billy was one of many great athletes, but he was chosen because we knew that out of everyone, he would appreciate this award the most. And so Billy, I just want to personally say thank you for everything you do for us. Congratulations, and I'm so happy that you are part of the Special Olympics movement and everything we're doing.
I appreciate this award. I appreciate the town for recognizing me, this humble achievement. I'd like to thank my parents, my friends, especially Special Olympics. We try to do a whole lot in the state of Virginia, and hopefully we can do some more, hopefully, in the future, hopefully within the Town of Herndon. So thank you.
I'm going to say something nice about you. Billy is not just a Special Olympian, he is a special, special young man. He is the kind of person that everyone would want for a neighbor, as one very brief example. This winter, during one of the awful snowstorms that we had, I looked out my window because Joel was, of course, at work, and I wondered, how am I ever going to get that done? I can't go out the door, let alone shovel. Within an hour, it was done without asking, without knowing Billy was there. So I just, again, am proud and pleased to have him as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Stevie Mitchell, I don't have an address here anymore, so I'll spare the part, but I just wanted to say I'm so proud of you, Billy. Not only you're an awesome athlete, you're one of the best friends I have and the best people I know, so very proud to be here for you tonight, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Congratulations, Billy. You make us proud. That brings us to our comments portion of the agenda. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Well, Madam Mayor, after the eloquence and achievements of that, Billy, this bill will just bow out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments from council? Can you start? Ms. Friedrichs.
I want to say a thank you to the Department of Public Works, guys. On Monday, I had dragged, actually, my husband had dragged about five very large tree limbs to the curb because of the big storm we had on Saturday, and on Monday, they were putting them in the truck as torrents of rain came down on them. And I looked out my window and I thought, I am so lucky. I am so lucky and I am so grateful. So I just want to tell Tammy that you guys did a great job. I was one of the first people on the route. I don't know how long they survived out there, but I was really impressed. I also wanted to thank a local resident and advocate, Danielle Scherf. She was, she got a request from Mrs. Blend, who's a music teacher at Herndon Elementary School, to help them pay for the lights, connections to the lights for their drama, their, well, it says here. She wrote, "We have no stage lights in our gym or auditorium for a whole year. The stage lights need to be up to regulation code by an electrician who will wire the lights appropriately and add a breaker and switch for safety. We must use our county's electricians to get this work accomplished. Our students are singing and using the stage, but their voices are not clearly seen without those canned stage lights." So they needed $1,600 to get this done, and this resident, Danielle, made a big effort, sent it out to everybody that she knew, and as far as I know, she's had at least 16 people donate, so there's a good possibility she's actually funded this. So I just really want to shout out, it's local citizens who make it possible for us to function sometimes. And it seems like when you have town government, you want to go to them because it seems like it's going to be easier, but Danielle got that done so fast, I don't know. I'm really impressed, so that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeKalb, do you have any comments for us?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Few things. First thing, the community roundtable that we were all in, it was a wonderful opportunity to meet all the residents, whoever came that day, and many great questions and concerns were raised. And we received a lot of emails later also, how appreciating the residents are because, you know, we had time to talk to them, but I want to say, we appreciate you because you came and brought all those concerns and questions. So that was great initiative, thank you so much, and we will definitely do more and more rounds of those, for sure. And another thing is, I just wanted to mention that I was in a community event organized by the Nepalese community of Northern Virginia for raising fund to build a community center. And I was volunteering there, and we were able to raise more than $2 million. And that really shows, when people are united to do something, you can always do it. And Herndon was always leading when it came to that fundraising. I mean, Herndon was probably the first or second in terms of all the, you know, different cities and towns in Northern Virginia in that fundraising. So just wanted to mention you, mention to you about that because when people unite to build something and take ownership, anything is possible. That's what I learned, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Sure, just a few things. There are seven Friday Night Lives left, so hope to see you at all seven of those. I had the pleasure of...
calendar every year, on July 21st, it's a Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00, will be recognizing the winners of who, of those photo submissions and what our calendar will look like for next year. So, that's always a fun event. I think the Vice Mayor will be speaking at that event. And then finally, don't forget that your trash and recycling days are going to change the first week of August. Mayor's probably going to remind us of that too. But hopefully, you saw a sticker, or you will this week, on your trash or recycling cans as you put them out this week to remind you of what your new days are. So, the recycling days will change for everyone because those will either be Monday or Tuesday. So, where the whole town today is on a Wednesday, that changes for everyone to either Monday or Tuesday. And then your trash will be Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, depending on your neighborhood. So, this should really help our DPW staff and looking forward to the change. I know it was a year-long process in the making to get us to this point. So, be on the lookout for that. And it's the first week of August is when that starts. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to dovetail on Councilmember DeCall's comments on the roundtable. I found it most enlightening. Spoke to a few people that I had not met before. I think the venue was great. It was different. And I'm really looking forward to the next one. So, for the folks that have not made it out there, check out the schedule. We definitely want to hear from you. We don't know everything that's going on, so thank you for bringing the new things to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I also enjoyed the roundtable. I thought it was great. We had a nice crowd and I saw some people that I hadn't met before. So, that was really nice. On the trash pickup, I was going online to check that out. You can actually go on and type in your address and they'll tell you your day. So, they've really got it going on. So, I was impressed. Thank you. I hope everyone had fun on the Fourth of July. We had a little neighborhood gathering. We call it the island. Everybody was out there, even with the rain. We have such a nice canopy. We stayed through the rain. And then later that evening, we could watch the flicker of lights through the wonderful trees that we have. So, we want to keep our trees. We just kind of looked at the lights through them and decided not to go. But the most exciting thing that happened was on Sunday, my mom turned 91. So, everyone should be so lucky to have a mom as healthy as mine, 91 years old. Another shout out to Gracie.
Exactly. 91 going on 19. Yeah. So, I wanted to just mention, I think someone mentioned at the last public hearing that the Women's World Cup was going on. And that has just concluded on Sunday. As you probably know, the USA Women won the final for the second time in a row. And my family and I were there. It was so exciting. I still can't believe we were there. These women are just phenomenal. They are great role models. It was so much fun to be at all the games and see men and boys, along with women and girls, wearing the jerseys of these awesome players. So, go USA. That was very exciting and that's why I was not here last week. And while I was gone, I got an email that I want to share with you guys from a lady, Dr. Therese Norris Sharp, who is a veterinarian in Texas. And you might wonder, why in the world is she emailing the mayor of Herndon? She wrote and said, "Hello there. I'm writing to let you know of a letter I found in an old veterinary book given to me by the daughter of Dr. C.L. Kronfeld, who owned a practice in Herndon back in the 1940s and 50s. The letter was sent by then-mayor Calvin Kidwell. I thought you might be interested in the letter and the contents for your archives. It discusses municipal taxes paid by merchants at that time. I'd be happy to send it to you, just let me know where and to whom." So, I was out of the country. I know Barbara's like, "Send it to me." No. So, when I got home, it was there. And this is just the greatest thing. Look at how yellow it is. The councilmen were, the mayor was Calvin Kidwell. The council members were Granville White, Dr. Detweiler, who we all have heard of, J.B. McDaniel, S.F. Hutchison, which I am assuming is a member of former Vice Mayor Connie Hutchinson's family, Grayson Haynes, and W.B. Harrison. So, this letter is dated April 3rd, 1948. I guess it's been tucked in a veterinary book for who knows how many years. But I thought, it was so thoughtful of her to take the time to try and figure out where to send this. And I've been told, it's the actual copy, it's signed by Mayor Kidwell. How fun is that? So, I need to, Barbara, I have to give this to the town clerk as a record, but you may certainly have a copy of it. You were the first person I thought of. And if council would like to take a look at it on the way down the dais, I thought that was really a treat. So, that's all I have. Want to pass it on down? And that brings us to comments from the audience. This is the opportunity for anyone who's here to speak on an item that is not listed as a public hearing item to come forward. You have up to three minutes, state your name and address for the record. And when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Ms. Flagel.
Barbara Flagel, 935 Barton Oaks Place. So, I wasn't going to come down here, but Calvin Kidwell. I don't know if you saw, I recently did, you know, I asked the connection if they would do an article about the pictures of mayors. Because we have in your conference room over here, a display of all the mayors of Herndon from 1879 on forward. But there were seven mayors whose pictures we were unable to find. And one of them is Calvin Kidwell. We have his name written everywhere. I know what church he went to. You know, I've seen him on Chamber of Commons, but we don't have his picture. So, anyway, so that's really cool. Thank you. But I thought I'd just do another plug. If anybody, you can either contact the Historical Society or look at that article in this week's connection. We list the names of the seven mayors for whom we don't have photographs. Some of them are from the 1800s, so it's kind of like, well, no wonder we don't have those pictures. But some are more recent, like, you know, 1940s and 50s. Calvin Kidwell, for some reason, just can't find his picture. So, if anybody, you know, has any pictures or knows any connections of people who might have pictures or knows anybody's granddaughters or cousins, you know, please contact me. And I can be contacted through the Herndon Historical Society.
Let me give you this. Maybe this lady can know somebody who can help. Who knows? There you go. Certainly. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak on any item that's not one of our public hearing items? Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. We do have several public hearings this evening. The first one is Resolution 19G42, to consider two additional chapters of the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines for the Herndon Transit Oriented Core, the H-TOC. This public hearing was continued from our May 28th public hearing to allow almost an additional two months for public comment and comments from the applicants, or I guess not the applicants, the landowners over in this area, because this is important to them. I'll open the public hearing and announce that all comments that have been received on this item have been entered into the record. And Bryce Perry, the Deputy Director of Community Development, is here for the step report. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council. The item before you are the final two chapters of the Herndon Transit Oriented Core, the H-TOC Architectural, Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines. Those are the signage chapter and the landscaping chapter. These chapters, like the rest of the already adopted H-TOC guidelines, will provide design direction for redevelopment within the H-TOC. And as a quick refresher, the H-TOC includes those nine properties that were master planned with the Herndon Metro Area Study and the H-TOC Plan and are closest to the Herndon's Metro Rail Station, south of Herndon Parkway. That's what's shown in the aerial photograph on the top right of this slide. The Guidelines, as already adopted, focus principally on design guidance for building architecture and for the urban design principles related to connectivity throughout the H-TOC. They were adopted and added by reference in the town's zoning ordinance in 2013. As adopted then and to be updated with the inclusion of these two additional chapters, the H-TOC Guidelines are one way in which the town is able to implement the design tenants and vision expressed in the master plan, which called for a vibrant mixed-use urban setting with an emphasis on quality design, sustainable development, and multimodal transportation options. As intended, the Guidelines have become a very important tool, not only for the town's evaluation of the design of redevelopment projects, but also for developers and their design teams, because it articulates the town's expectations for design. This will be true of the landscaping and signage chapters, which will provide staff and town officials consistent standards by which to assess landscape and signage design and provide developers a clear understanding of what design components and level of design is important to the town for this area. These two chapters have been drafted by professional urban design and landscape architecture consultants in close coordination with town staff. They were reviewed by the Architecture Review Board in November of 2018 and the Planning Commission of April 2019. The H-TOC property owners and the representatives were sent drafts of these drafts of the landscaping and signage guidelines with requests for comments on a few occasions, beginning in October of 2018. They also received notification of each of the reviews prior to the ARBE review, prior to the Planning Commission review, and prior to the Town Council reviews. Up until two weeks ago, when one of the H-TOC property owners submitted memos with notable comments for both chapters, prior feedback was really minimal. The staff had received a few questions for clarity and a few comments that were addressed throughout the process. As for those mentioned memos, I'm going to discuss them in a little bit more detail and I'll discuss the staff recommended approach on how staff believes it best to evaluate those comments towards the end of the presentation. So, each of these chapters include an errata sheet, a list of amendments pertaining to each of the chapter. And these amendments have been collected since the Architecture Review Board review back in November. We have kept these lists really to minimize the number of revisions with the town's consultants. It's both kept costs down, but it's also streamlined the review process for the documents. These lists of amendments would be referenced and attached in the Town Council's resolution for adoption. And then staff would work with the consultants to ensure each of these amendments are integrated into the final document. So, I'll now go through quick summaries here of each of the chapters as proposed. First, the signage chapter. This chapter is arranged, starting with a design philosophy, followed by a handful of design objectives applicable to all the signs in the H-TOC. There's then design principles associated to sign placement, to sign size, material, fabrication. And lastly, there are sign standards that are specific to the 14 different types of sign types that are included in the document. These sign standards provide specific direction on each sign type's size, number, location, means of illumination, and a few other items. The chapter focuses on ensuring diversity in sign types, obviously with 14 sign types. The purpose is to help create a dynamic urban environment that is expected for the H-TOC. It also focuses on ensuring high-quality signs that exhibit both their own character and a collective character that contribute to a cohesive sign program, not just for the individual businesses, but for the district as a whole. The chapter relies mainly on written sign standards. However, there are precedent images that provide examples of well-designed signs that meet the proposed standards and a few architectural perspective renderings that give the reader a sense of the general locations of each of the sign types. The landscaping chapter is divided up into two sections. The first section covers connections in the H-TOC. The connections section provides the design guidance for public and private streets. It focuses on ensuring the streets have a consistent quality design that is visually appealing and, of course, has a high level of service for pedestrians. For this portion of the chapter, much of the content is graphics-based. So, there's street plan views, there's street section views, and there's streetscape perspective renderings that illustrate the various dimensional standards for each of the street types. The next section covers spaces. These are the guidelines for plaza areas, for small parks, and for the pedestrian-only passages in the H-TOC. And that includes the promenade, which, of course, is probably the most important bit of open space in the H-TOC. It connects Herndon Parkway to the Herndon Metro Rail Station and really acts as a front door of sorts, not only to the H-TOC, but to the entire town. These guidelines emphasize creative and diverse designs that define and strengthen an engaging urban environment and hopefully, a unique sense of space for the H-TOC. The open space section relies on precedent images largely and some graphics to provide good examples of other urban landscapes that succeed in meeting the objectives and guidelines set forth in the document and also, of course, on more traditional written design guidelines. Both the connections and spaces section of the landscaping chapter includes specific standards related to surface materials, such as pavers and planting areas, specific standards for site furnishings, such as benches and bicycle racks, and standards specific to site lighting. These are just some of the many precedent images that are included within these proposed guidelines for landscape design. The final section of the landscaping chapter also deals with environmentally sustainable design. This includes general objectives on certain sustainable practices, such as on-street stormwater retention, green roofs, natural areas integrated into plaza areas, and contains in-depth plant pallets suitable for urban environments. The Town Council reviewed these design guidelines and the associated list of amendments at its second set of meetings in May. The hearing was continued to July at the request of one of the H-TOC property owners to allow the property owner additional time to review the documents and provide comments back to town staff. Comments were provided to town staff. However, they were not provided within a timeframe that would allow staff the time to effectively evaluate them before the materials, including those comments were sent to the Town Council for their July work session and tonight's hearing. These are extensive comments that, if fully addressed, would require substantial changes to the draft documents and maybe even some changes to the already adopted chapters in the H-TOC Guidelines. It's very important to consider the input from the stakeholders, especially when time was taken, as was the case here, to provide comments of this level. However, if staff is able to properly analyze the comments for any possible changes to the proposed H-TOC Guidelines, additional time would be necessary for that evaluation. The issue really, though, is that this item is considered time-sensitive. Without the benefit of signage and landscaping design guidelines during the review of other H-TOC developments, it really was a challenge for the town, for staff, to achieve a level of design otherwise expected and envisioned for the H-TOC. And this, of course, added review time to each of those cases, which impacts both town staff and impacts the applicant. We do expect the submission of more plans for development in the H-TOC in the very near future. And having these guidelines in place as soon as possible will give the town, the staff, the ARBE, the Planning Commission, the Town Council, the means to consistently and effectively assess appropriate urban design. It's great that we have the architectural guidelines adopted and in place. And it's great that we have the urban design principles for connectivity adopted and in place already. But the open space design really may be the most defining component of character in an urban environment. And, of course, signage can be very impactful to the character. So, we do want to make sure we have the necessary tools in place to help ensure that we can get the character envisioned in the master plan. So, that being said, staff is recommending approval of the resolution adopting the two chapters of the H-TOC Guidelines, along with their list of amendments as referenced. Staff believes, however, that the Town Council should consider also directing staff, dependent on time availability, of course, to analyze the new comments received and return to the Town Council with recommendations for if and how the guidelines may be amended in response to those comments. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Perry? Anyone? Well, I have a few questions for you, if you don't mind. So, you have some dates in here. We've been doing this for quite a while. When did we first, do you know, kind of ballpark, when we first notified the landowners, the stakeholders, that we were approaching this landscape and open space chapters review?
I believe it was October of last year is when we had first sent them. And that was when we, we had already been working with the consultant for about a year at that point. But that was when we were ready to start showing it to the Architecture Review Board. So, we wanted to make sure that, before the Architecture Review Board reviewed it, that the stakeholders were given a chance to review it.
And how often has staff been in touch with the stakeholders throughout this process?
There's been maybe seven sort of official rounds of notification. And that was both official notification prior to Architecture Review Board, Planning Commission, Town Council, but also just more informal emails. Email blasts out to all the property owners and the property owner representatives.
So, it's a pretty steady conversation back and forth about the process with stakeholders?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's been maybe seven sort of official rounds of notification, and that was both official notification prior to Architecture Review Board, Planning Commission, Town Council, but also just more informal emails, email blasts out to all the property owners and the property owner representatives.
So it's a pretty steady conversation back and forth about the process with stakeholders?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And this also went through several public hearings with the Planning Commission? Is that correct?
It went through a work session and a public hearing with Planning Commission in April.
Okay, and when did we receive these extensive comments?
They were received, it was the Wednesday prior to the July work session for Town Council. The date escapes me right now.
Okay. Okay, and just to clarify, if we were to adopt this tonight and direct staff to look at the additional comments, the council is able to amend this document at any time once staff has had the chance to make comments and recommendations?
Absolutely, correct.
So it is flexible to some degree?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from council? Thank you for letting me put you on the spot like that. So this is a public hearing. We'll call from comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? You can say your name and address for the record, and you have up to three minutes. Please try to wrap up when you see the red light. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Really? Okay. So then I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 19G42. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrichs and seconded by Ms. Olm. Discussion on the motion. Yes, ma'am.
I keep turning it off when I'm supposed to be turning it on. I read the comments that were sent to us, and they were fascinating. I learned a lot, and I'm glad that they took the time to send it to us, but I do think that it was a little bit late, and given our discussion with the town attorney at the work session, and knowing how flexible we can be with these variances in amendments, I think that the staff has requested that we approve them, and I'm in favor of that. I think time is of the essence.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, thanks, staff, for the detailed reports that we've gotten at the last two work sessions, excuse me, and all the hard work and many, many months of working on this with staff and the community and the Planning Commission and all the businesses. So I think we're ready to go forward, and we can always tweak. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Anyone? Yep, yes, sir.
And again, thank you, once again, for this presentation and the presentation at the work session. I was comfortable after that session, comfortable with this now, so thank you.
Okay, there's no further discussion? I will call the question on the motion, which was to approve made by Ms. Friedrichs, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That motion carries. Thank you. Next up is ordinance 19020 to consider zoning ordinance text amendment number 1901 to amend Chapter 78 zoning PDUR, Planned Development Urban Residential. I'll open the public hearing. All comments that we've received have been entered into the record, and I'll recognize our zoning administrator, Dave Stromberg, for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Merkel, members of council. As mentioned, this is ZODA number 19-01, which is Plan Development Urban Residential District. So the proposal tonight is to create a new zoning district. It will be Article 5, which is where we keep all of our planned development zoning districts. The new section number will be 78-51.1. The reason why we're proposing this zoning district is to implement the policies and recommendations of the Hernan 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and specifically for the residential adaptive land use category. So in addition to our main comprehensive plan, we also have a few small area plans within the town. The most recently adopted was the South Eldon Area Plan. That was CPA number 18-01, and that was approved in February of this year. So the South Eldon Area Plan recommended land uses for the entire corridor. This zoning district is only intended for areas identified as Tier 2 in that plan, and that's called the Transitional Urban Residential Area, hence the name of the zoning district. The plan identifies Tier 2 properties as those that are over seven acres and do not abut Eldon Street, and the recommended development type for the Tier 2 properties are townhouses and two-over-two stacked townhouses. And the two-over-twos, they look like a four-level townhouse, but it's really a two-level unit with another two-level unit on top of it. And the density that's anticipated by the South Eldon Area Plan is, in Tier 2, is between 18 and 20 units per acre. So the goals of Tier 2 are to preserve and protect stable residential neighborhoods, encourage multimodal use, increase residential units to provide a walkable customer base for retail and service uses, and I'll use one of the planning terms that may be overused, but high-quality developments. And what we mean by that is really, you know, thoughtfully designed developments, not just taking something cookie cutter and applying it in multiple places throughout, but really being context-sensitive to the specific site. The only property that's identified as Tier 2 in this particular plan is the 1145 through 1175 Hernan Parkway, and that's also known as the Finnmark property. It's just under nine acres, and it contains multi-tenant office buildings. So again, just to be clear tonight, that what you're looking to vote on tonight is a text amendment. It is not a live zoning map amendment. If adopted, this will give a property owner the option to request this zoning district, whereas if it doesn't exist, nobody can request to rezone to it. So if a property owner does want to develop under these provisions, they would need to submit a rezoning application to staff. That would include proper conditions and a generalized development plan that also go to public hearings before the Planning Commission and the Town Council. So this zoning district is intended to achieve a cohesive buffer between existing residential developments and any new mixed-use nodes, or if you have existing corridor commercial being a buffer between those properties, to provide a mix of housing types, incorporate universal design where possible, incorporate energy efficiency and onsite stormwater solutions, provide components of adopted bicycle and pedestrian networks, and to provide connectivity between different neighborhoods. So the total mix of permitted land uses for this district are single-family, duplex and triplex, townhouse, stacked townhouse or two-over-twos, multifamily, a daycare establishment, and retail uses. Again, this is the maximum list of uses that somebody could request, and then they could also proffer certain uses out for specific sites, depending on their particular development. Like most of our other districts, this has dimensional requirements. The density for this district would be a maximum of 15 units per acre if you're only using one housing type. If you're using two housing types, you can go up to a maximum of 20 units per acre. Again, we're trying to get different housing types within projects. The minimum lot area required to establish this zoning district is two and a half acres, and this captures all properties that are identified as adaptive residential in the Hernan 2030 Comprehensive Plan. There is a 20% open space requirement for every development. There's a requirement that at least 8% of the development be usable for programmable spaces, whether that's active or passive, both of that would count. 60% maximum building coverage. And then the setbacks are designed so that along any public streets, buildings will be located closer to the road, so there's a 10 to 15-foot range where those buildings are supposed to be located. There is an exception to that where, if you include a small pocket park, then the buildings can be pushed back up to 40 feet from the road, and that's on the public streets, internal streets. There's more flexibility on where the buildings can be located. There is a height limit in this district. It's generally going to be 50 feet in height is the maximum, and that would allow both your traditional townhomes and your stacked two-over-twos. But there are situations where the maximum height is limited only to 40 feet. So if you're looking down at this image with your PD Urban Residential project in the middle, and the box on the yellow is single-family residential zoned, and the box on the right, which is the red one, is commercially zoned, your site would have the 50-foot height limit going from the red box over until you get to those hatched lines, which would be 50 feet away from anything that's residentially zoned. Then your height limit drops to a maximum of 40, and there, your only uses, building types you're really going to be able to fit in there are single-family residences and As I mentioned, the ordinance places a high-level importance on how recreation and open spaces are incorporated into the overall developments. Open spaces should be usable. They shouldn't be leftovers that are pushed out into the corners of developments. Up here is an example of a community dog park or just a community green that the buildings are fronting on. Those would be assets that we'd be looking for within developments. Ordinance also has requirements that mechanical equipment be located either on the roof or integrated into the facades of buildings. It could be a combination of the two, where you have a top unit where the HVAC is on the roof, and then the lower one, it could be integrated into the facade. And part of the reason why we did this is, at this level of density, you're really limited with space in the alleyways. As you can see on these images, the picture on the left, that has ground-level HVAC equipment, and with the trash and recycling receptacles, there's really nothing left as far as space between the driveways, and that wouldn't be allowed under the ordinance. The image on the right does have integrated HVAC mechanical units right there. They're circled in red. And that leaves, you still have a limited amount of space, but you can install things like landscaping or something else to make that space a little bit more inviting, rather than just putting everything all right back there. So speaking of driveways, we do have requirements for driveways. They would need to be a minimum of 18 feet in depth. That would meet your parking requirements. You could not make it shorter than that, and so that would work out to being a full driveway. That's the image on the left. You're not required to have a driveway. You can go from the alley directly into your garage, but then you can only have a three-foot apron there. That's also permitted. What isn't permitted is those distances in between, between three feet and 18 feet, where you get something that's not quite a driveway but more than an apron, and then you have vehicles that tend to stick out into the alley and then just cause problems as far as maneuverability. And that's that picture on that right. That wouldn't be permitted under this ordinance. Language has standards for mailbox locations. They have to be accessible from sidewalks. They can't be accessible from the street. So again, image on the left, that would be acceptable under the ordinance. The image on the right would not, because you would have to stand in the street in order for you to actually go and get your mail. This district incorporates the town streetscape standards. We do have standards for different types of streets throughout the town, and it also incorporates a bare minimum of a six-foot sidewalk and a six-foot tree-planting verge. So that's where you have your trees and your grass there, in between the sidewalk and The ordinance also has to include the multimodal accommodations, again, amenities for pedestrians, cyclists, and those who use transit. These are two examples of that, transfacilities and just bicycle amenities as part of a site. These would be required in different developments. This went to the Planning Commission for two different sets of meetings. It first went in May to the work session and public hearing. The Planning Commission had a number of comments for staff. An interested party, Cooley, who's been sending letters throughout this process and has been working with staff, they raised a lot of good points. So there are a number of changes made to the language after that May meeting, and then that was brought back to the Planning Commission for the June set of meetings, and then the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the language after the June public hearing. So staff and the Planning Commission are both recommending approval of the language.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Stromberg? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg. Great presentation during the work session and today as well. I have a question on Slide 8, which is a coverage requirement. It says 20% open space. So when we say open space, are we talking about community green park, or also the parking lot is considered as open space?
The parking lot would not be considered.
Will not be considered. Okay, great. Thank you. And another one is Slide 14. So when we are talking about six-inch minimum sidewalk, how do we make sure? So I just wanted to ask you this question. How can we make sure it is ADA compliant as well? Do we have to put that in here, or how does it?
That's something that staff looks for any time during plan review, but having six feet goes beyond the minimum ADA requirements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So I really like the fact that high quality means thoughtfully designed and that you're working on connectivity between neighborhoods. That's wonderful. Just want to clarify for sure. This won't ever be, this won't be enforced unless a developer requests it?
Right. A developer or property owner has to come in and request that their property be rezoned to this district.
Okay, and our guidelines for rezoning it are the ones that you just set out?
Right. Those are the types of standards that they would need to meet when they're requesting to rezone to this zoning district.
I also, you mentioned that you're moving development, because it's urban design, you're moving development closer to the street, right? Is that dwellings or commercial or both?
It would be either. The most likely type of uses we see in this district, and really what the small area plans call for, are predominantly residential uses. Standalone daycares are listed as a permitted use in, I think, almost all of our residential zoning districts. We don't have too many, but there are a few instances in town where they have kind of been incorporated right there within residential developments. And as far as some of the retail uses, we weren't really sure if each site would be appropriate for that. Again, it would really depend on which site you're looking at, but given some of the redevelopment that may happen adjacent to some of these, the Planning Commission wanted to allow that as a use if a site that seemed to be a good fit for PDUR and then a more heavily commercial site were to develop at the same time, possibly under the same ownership, be able to have a little bit of that mixture there so that those two sites could better integrate with each other. But again, there aren't a lot of commercial uses that would be permitted there.
So having a dwelling that closer to the road is desirable in urban design now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And why is that?
It really frames kind of the walls and the streetscapes for the community, and a lot of the more traditional style or suburban-style developments you see out there, it's almost, it was trying to recreate just kind of a farm attitude where it's way in the back and you have all this yard. in the back and you have all this yard, which really wasn't usable space going towards the street. It wasn't active amenity. It wasn't parking. A lot of it was just empty lawn. So this better utilizes the site.
Okay. And then one last thing. You had a list of design requirements, and one of them, they all were fairly specific. And then one was universal design where possible. Why is universal design less important than those other things? Or is that not why you said that?
It is not less important than those other things. It is very important. It's one of the things that's more difficult for a locality to require.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you again for last week and this week's presentation. And just to clarify, page seven, the permitted land uses. So just to be clear, these are what is currently being proposed to be allowed.
Yes.
But a developer could come in and say, I want all multifamily or all retail, or I want stacked two-over-twos.
Yes, they could come in and request it. And what staff and the planning commission would be basing their evaluation of that zoning proposal on is the small-area plan that was adopted for that.
Correct. And we, the council, would have some say in to how that got approved.
Yes, it would ultimately be approve it or deny.
Some people were asking, well, if you approve it, they're gonna, so we still have to approve everything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. And so just to clarify, to make sure that the audience in particular understands what we're talking about. A text amendment is what creates this opportunity to do this.
Correct.
Right now, there's no opportunity to do this, so no one can even request it.
No, nobody can request this right now. There is no option for a property owner to try and get these specific uses in these specific locations.
So what we're doing, what we would be doing is just putting this into the code as a possibility, and then they still have to go through a process to actually implement any kind of plan.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. All right. So this is a public hearing. We'll call from comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Once again, it's up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian Winterhalter with Cooley. Office address is 11951 Freeman Drive in Reston in the town center. And we very much appreciate all the work that staff has put into this text amendment. And we appreciate the dialogue that we've had with staff and the revisions to the draft as it has evolved. The one last remaining question we have was a request for confirmation per the letter that I submitted to the council, that as part of a rezoning application to the PDUR district, the requirement for mechanical equipment to be on the rooftop could be modified as part of that approval, which would obviously be subject to your all's review. And if we could have confirmation of that, we would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-20.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
Yes, thanks, staff, for all your work on this. This has been an area, we specifically were doing this because an area off the Herndon Parkway has been sought after for years for redevelopment. And I think this would answer a lot of the concerns we've had about what would be appropriate for that. And when we got the letter talking about a homeowner having to use a crane to put an air conditioning unit, I would concur as a homeowner that I certainly wouldn't want to have to pay for the use of a crane to put the unit on the top of my house. But I think that was all addressed appropriately as well. That would add a huge burden to the homeowners. Where commercial buildings, a whole different thing. But I think this is a good plan, and I hope we have some people take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Ms. Baker.
Yeah, so did we fully answer that question? Because I think what he was saying is whether it could be modified. Because I think what we wanted, what we'd stated, and maybe, Mr. Stromberg, you can help just clarify that for us. I think that's really worth discussing. I've owned a townhouse in Reston that did have a unit on the roof, which it's not ideal, but I knew it going in, so I knew that was a potential expense. It's not that much more when you have to, you don't replace that unit very often. And they can maintain that without the crane. So can you address his question, please? Please.
For any of the provisions in any planned development district, applicants have a right to request a modification to that zoning district through the rezoning process. That's one of the big differences between a planned development district and standard Euclidian zoning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That helps.
Further discussion on the motion? Jen took my question, so if there's no further discussion, I will call the question which was to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Mr. Del Agula. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. Moving right along, we have Resolution 19G44 to consider a special exception application for 1037 Sterling Road, Suite 101, to allow a vocational school, which is Divine Health Tech Institute. And I'll open the public hearing and recognize Dave Stromberg, zoning administrator, once again.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. This is special exception 19-04 for an educational facility at 1037 Sterling Road, Suite 101. Property is located within a condo suite within the crossroads of Dulles Office Park. That's at the corner of Eldon Street and Sterling Road. The property is owned CO Commercial Office. The Dulles Park Shopping Center is located just to the south of the site. That's owned CS, Commercial Services. Property of the north is R10, which is single-family residential. And then Burke Dale Apartments are located just west, and those are zoned RM. So this property is commercial office, and the only real by right use in this zoning district are specifically office uses. But it does allow a number of other potential uses through the special exception process. Educational services is one of those uses. Things like residential or entertainment, those are not just permitted at all in this zoning district. Zooming in a little bit more on the site, it's in the condominium suite that's right behind Mallow Mushroom and adjacent to the shopping center. And when staff was evaluating this application, we really were trying to look at what types of impacts there would be and the development of this site overall. And when it was developed, it was developed with about 35 more parking spaces throughout the overall development than the minimum requirement by the zoning ordinance. So taking that into account, and then the conditions that are being proposed by the staff, we really don't think there will be too many negative impacts by allowing this use. And I'll run through those conditions. Maximum class size of five students, hours of operation between 8:00 AM and 10:00. They have to obtain new occupancy permits. And then if they do not start this operation within 12 months, it'll expire. And if ownership changes, then a different owner would be required to come back and get a special exception. This was heard by the planning commission in May, and they recommended approval with the staff conditions. So staff and the planning commission are recommending approval with conditions. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Stromberg? All right, thank you very much. If the applicant or applicant's agent is here and would like to come forward, we would welcome comments and, no? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so we will call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 19G44.
Second. Okay, discussion on the motion.
I wish the business owner success should they go forward with this. It's a nice development over there. And just like with our daycares, if they decide to move out, then the zoning would change. So it wouldn't be any long-lasting impact should this owner leave and another one come in.
Yep, I concur.
Yes, I think, I agree with my colleagues. I think that especially with the conditions, I have no concerns about this. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, that motion carries. The next two items are Resolution 19G45 to authorize the reserve of fiscal year 2019 funding and Ordinance 19021 to amend the fiscal year 2020 adopted budget. Director of Finance, Jenny Tripoli, is already up here. She's going to present the staff reports concurrently, after which separate public hearings will be conducted, followed by roll-call votes. So giving you guys a heads-up, there'll be a roll-call vote for both of those. So Jenny Tripoli, let us.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Merkel. Good evening, everyone. And I want to wish you all a happy fiscal new year. It's a special time of year for those of us in budget and finance. The reason I'm here before you today presenting two different reports is they relate to two different fiscal years. The resolution is to reserve unspent funds that need to be carried forward into the next fiscal year, as of June 30th, 2019, because projects are still ongoing or there still is a need for those funds. Typically appropriations expire at the end of each fiscal year, and so this would reserve some of those unused funds and unspent encumbrances. Specifically, we have a few items in the general fund, a couple items relating to space redesign for the new deputy town attorney and also for the neighborhood resource that CD has. Some ongoing consulting work with our, in our CIP project in finance. And finally, some professional services related to the downtown redevelopment. So all told, we're looking to reserve about $86,000 of unspent general fund funds, which is down from a little over $330,000 last year. So we do try to keep that number as low as possible, so that is good. In the capital improvements program fund, that is where most of our major, well, all of our major capital projects occur, most of those projects span multiple years, and so we're asking to reserve those unspent funds. It's a fairly large number, but that doesn't mean that we're going to spend all $23 million of that next year. A lot of that, again, is your transportation funding, and that is grant-funded, so when that money gets spent, we do get reimbursements. And finally, just a few dollars in the golf course fund related to a vehicle and also to a feasibility study for the golf course. And finally, for the cemetery fund, just $13,000 in encumbrances. So if you approve the resolution, we can move on to the ordinance, which would then amend the 2020 budget.
Are there questions for Ms. Tripoli? Anyone? Okay.
Just one.
Yes. Yes, can you explain to us why we didn't vote in June on Resolution 19G45? Since we're talking about the end-of-the-year funds, why do we wait until July to do it all at once?
I think ostensibly, we could vote on it, on this resolution, prior to June 30th, but we have better numbers the further along we get. We don't have final numbers yet for the fiscal year. We're still actively closing it. It does take about 60 to 90 days for all of the revenues and all of the expenditures to roll through. So if you get a little bit later, you get a little bit better numbers. Most of these are estimates. The actual numbers, once we get them, are what will be carried forward, and they can't necessarily exceed these numbers.
Thank, you're welcome. Thank you. Other questions, anyone? Okay. Thank you very much. So we, as I stated before, we will have separate public hearings on these two items. The first one is the public hearing on Resolution 19G45 to authorize the reserve of fiscal year funds. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to council for discussion and action. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I'm.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 19G45.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for all your explanations.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? All right. So again, this will be a roll-call vote, so I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Olam.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Council, Mayor Merkel.
Yes. So that motion carries. And next, we'll hold the public hearing on Ordinance 19021 to amend the budget. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to council for discussion and Ms. Baker.
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance 19-0-21.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? No.
No further discussion.
All right. So with that, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Olam.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Mayor Merkel.
Yes. That motion carries as well. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Resolution 19G46 to authorize a license to Vivacity DC Inc. to use designated public property in the downtown in accordance with the pilot program agreement. I will open the public hearing and recognize our town manager, Bill Ashton, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you recall, last year, you all approved a pilot agreement with Vivacity DC Incorporated to provide smart cities technology services to the downtown area. This includes changing out current streetlights to LED lights, includes adding some smart poles into the mix, and providing Wi-Fi and various other smart cities technologies in the area. Well, in order for a project of this scope and magnitude to occur, we have to find a way to backhaul all that data that will be gathered and sent and transmitted back and forth from these various, these various sensors. So we need to pull fiber into the downtown. So what you have before you tonight is a license to allow Vivacity to start putting fiber in the ground to, so that we can move this project forward. This is very similar to what we would do with a franchise agreement for others that we've done in the past. Unfortunately, where Vivacity is, they're not eligible to get a franchise agreement, so we're using the licensing agreement as a way in which to get them working sooner. So if you have any questions about why the one versus the other, my esteemed colleague to my left will certainly entertain any of those questions. But other than that, I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Any questions for the town manager or the town attorney? Ms. Friedrichs.
So the sole purpose of this is.
Your microphone.
The sole purpose of this is to give them the opportunity to get going. There's no cost involved. It's.
There are no costs to the town involved. This is for them to provide the infrastructure they need to make this project happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Is there anything different from the discussion we had at the work session?
There is nothing different from last week, no.
Thank you.
Other questions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. So this is a public hearing, and I will invite representative from Vivacity DC forward if they would like to come forward and speak. No obligation. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Well, does anyone have questions of the applicant, because they are here? No? All right. So I will call for comments from the audience for the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I was going to give you opportunity for rebuttal, but I don't guess we need that. So I will move to council level for discussion and action. Ms. Baker.
Madam Mayor, I move Resolution 19G46.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Baker, seconded by the vice mayor. Discussion on the motion, and I forgot to remind everyone, this will be a roll-call vote as well.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, very excited to get started on this. I think this is going to be great.
Looking forward to our town being a smart city.
Exactly, a smart town, right?
Smart town.
There is a lot of excitement surrounding this. Is there any other comments?
Love data, want to see it.
Right. All right, so with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Olam.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Merkel.
Okay, yes. So that motion carries, obviously, and we are very excited to be getting started. So thank you for bearing with us through our meeting to get to that. This brings us to the general items. We have one general item, which is Ordinance 19022 to approve a lease of space in the town's building at 397 Herndon Parkway to our state delegate. Madam Town Attorney, do you have a staff report for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, the town owns the property at the 397 Herndon Parkway, as everyone knows. We do have a space there that was adequate for the delegate to make his office. Previously, the town had rented office space in Town Hall to Delegate Boyisco. When she became Senator, she, the town council granted a lease to her in that capacity. There is not any more room in Town Hall, so the town manager made the space available. It was acceptable, and the rent is $1 for the term, which shall run through December 31st of this year, which is consistent with the delegate's current term. If he obtains another term, then we will need to do another lease in December. The lease contains other terms relative to the use of the property that are consistent with all the other leases in town for similar properties.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the town attorney? Anyone? Yes.
Only one. Since this is only a quarter of the term, are we going to prorate it, or do they pay the full dollar?
I'll pay it.
Just checking.
Details.
He gives us 50 cents. Okay. So my question was, you answered it, was why is this not in Old Town Hall? There's just not a space available at the moment. And so the delegate has seen the space and is agreeable and is happy with the opportunity. Okay, good. Just want to make sure of that. All right, any other questions? No? Okay, well, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval of 19022.
Second.
Second.
All right, Jen beat you guys to it.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Absolutely, aye.
No discussion?
Oh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. And that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, we stand adjourned at 8:52 PM.